Somebody dirtied the water really bad. And we ended up with a for-profit entity coming into our city and taking advantage of our citizens to make a profit and take these monies not only out of our city, but out of our county, out of our state. And it benefited no one. So this board came back, readdressed it, and came up with a revised ordinance to ensure that the spirit of the ordinance was upheld. And that is that no for-profit entity could sell fireworks within the city limits. And we thought that was the end of it. Until several weeks ago, I go in Walmart's parking lot and I see cones up. I took pictures of them. And I sent them to a couple of commissioners and to the commander of our post. And I said, there's only one entity I know that would be putting up the cones, and that's TNT, which is a for-profit entity. Now there's a tent up in Walmart's parking lot. And it is no one other than TNT, a for-profit entity. At the Flying J, there's another tent that is up. It's the same tent, the same area that TNT, a for-profit, had the last time they were selling fireworks. My understanding is that they have no temporary structure permit. Although before the American Legion, which has its tent on private property, was required to get a temporary structure permit before it could erect its tent, which just went up Monday night. Yet TNT had theirs up, and I understand they don't have a permit. Then historically, when the American Legion has submitted for the temporary structure permit and the temporary sign permit, the turnaround time was about 24 hours. The temporary sign permit was given within a day. But our temporary structure permit took about three weeks to get this year. Then when we looked at the ordinance, to qualify for being a nonprofit, I'd like to go down a list of what the American Legion does for this city and this community. And it's not limited to this. But these were disqualified by our city manager, saying that these are not beneficial to the city or the citizens. Four Christmas trees to four needy families within our city. Christmas dinners for Fairview needy families. Our Fairview High School Junior ROTC Scholarship Fund. Quilts of Valor, which are given to our Fairview veterans. Supplies for Fairview veterans in state veterans' homes. The high school boys-girls state contributions. The Fireman's Auxiliary Fund, given to our Fairview Fire Department. Our Shop with a Cop, that we donate to the Fairview Police Department. Needy Fairview veterans. If I gave you the numbers, I think you'd be quite impressed with the thousands and thousands of dollars annually that the American Legion contributes to our city and our citizens. What's really amazing about the American Legion post is we should be very proud of us because, one, we don't have any rent. We don't have a freestanding building of our own, so we don't have that expense. A hundred percent of what we take in goes to our community, to our citizens, to our city, and to our veterans who come from Fairview. There's only two items that were considered beneficial to the city.
I'm sorry. You're, I think that you've used your six minutes, correct, Mr. Humphries?
I believe we have three others who will concede their time to me. They're all signed up.
If you'll come to the podium and give us your name and your address, please. Yes, sir.
Mayor, while we're waiting on, I'll wait to reserve my comments, too.
Yeah, well.
My name is Alan Murray. I lived at 7109 Oak Tree Drive here in Fairview, Tennessee for 41 years. I was on the planning commission for seven. I concede my time to Mr. Sean Surgo.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Keaton. I live at 7200 Johns Lane, and I concede my time to Mr. Sean.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Jamie Statton. I live at 7301 Shepton Park, and I also concede my time to Mr. Surgo.
So Chief Humphries?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I continue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. The only things that were considered being contributed to this city that qualified us as a nonprofit that we contributed to the city was the Fairview Veterans Memorial Park Swings and the Bowie Park Playground Fund. Now, the American Legion contributed $2,500 just this Monday night to the Bowie Park and proactively invested $3,103.50 into putting swings at the Veterans Park. It's amazing that the flagpoles that we put up just recently with the assistance of the city was not considered beneficial to the city or the citizens of the city, which is, it's beyond, it's irrehensible. That ensuring that all of our nation's armed services are represented in our city is not considered beneficial to our city, because now we have a new branch of military, so it required the new poles, that that's not considered beneficial to the city is just Last year, the American Legion was able to sell virtually all of its fireworks, which was wonderful. That means every dollar that was made by the Salido's fireworks, which was veterans contributing their time, it went to this city. Now, there was another entity here selling fireworks, and all but a few dollars of theirs went to some private owner and their stockholders in another state. So not only are we, in my opinion, being bullied and browbeat and delayed in getting our fireworks stand set up, but there's an entity that's doing it, and no one is doing anything proactive to stop them. And so my question is, who has the authority in this city to determine what is a contribution from a nonprofit that qualifies us to sell fireworks in this city? And then why is it this year, instead of taking 24 or 48 hours, we still have not received our permit from the city to sell the fireworks, because this year they've changed that, too? Now we have to have the permit from the state fire marshal before the city will give us a permit this year, but they have never done that historically. Now, for the state fire marshal, my understanding is the way it works is that there are certain municipalities that you cannot have any fireworks. Now, they will check those. Then there are municipalities that allow for privates, and they don't check those. But the ones that have conditions, they're not checking those. So if TNT goes to the state fire marshal and asks for a permit, and it shows that Fairview has a conditional permit, they're not going to qualify TNT. It's upon the city to tell TNT, you cannot sell fireworks in our city. So I want to know, as a citizen of this city, one, why are they allowed to have a temporary structure up without a temporary structure permit? Where is their signage? How do they even qualify to be anticipating selling fireworks when it's supposed to be for nonprofits only that are in this city, contributing to this city? And more importantly, if you let them do it, then what is the repercussion? If you wait till they open up and they sell for three or four or five days before you get an injunction, they've already made their profit. So commissioners, my question is, who's protecting the integrity of the ordinance that you put in place? Who's responsible for conforming to it? And if it's not being conformed to, then I want to know who is responsible for manipulating it and destroying the very spirit that this ordinance was created for, which was to ensure that the monies generated from fireworks sales stays 100% within this community as donations and contributions to the benefit of our citizens? And right now, we have an entity that has two tents up. And what are we going to do? Are we going to wait till they start selling fireworks and then say, you can't? It's too late. We have a city manager, who should be on top of this, and we have a city attorney who should be proactively preparing documentation for an ex parte emergency sanction to stop the sale of fireworks if they try to sell it. And I believe that both of these, city manager and a city attorney owes an explanation to our commissioners and our mayor if they are not proactively protecting the ordinance that you created in the spirit of the ordinance for what it was intended. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we will shift a little bit from normal order, and Mr. Collins, I'll let you speak.
Mayor, I would like to respond to that. Mr. Surgo mentioned that all of those things were reprehensible and beyond belief, and he's exactly right, because they're simply not true. Those are reprehensible and beyond belief, because it just simply hasn't happened in any way that he just previously described. Unfortunately, the application and the information that we got from Mr. Vansicle at the time of his application, he brought in, and he had questions about the ordinance specifically. So we went down the, we went through the ordinance. Richard Ross was there with us, Mr. Vansicle in the lobby. So Mr. Vansicle proceeded to ask a couple of questions, and he asked questions specific to what qualified as nonprofit activities within the city limits of the City of Fairview to its residents to comply with this. Nothing, nothing that was just described by Mr. Surgo was expressed to me in any way whatsoever by Mr. Vansicle. It simply did not take place. The conversation did not happen. Mr. Vansicle asked me one question, and one question only. And the question was, would it qualify if they had donated money to Fairview High School? That was the question that I was asked. My answer to that question was that there would be, that could possibly qualify as it relates to the ordinance, and the section of the ordinance reads as and has further provided documentation of proof of providing nonprofit community services to City of Fairview citizens. That's what the ordinance says that you passed. My response to Mr. Vansicle was, I was unsure, absent some documentation from the school or anyone else, if a simple donation of dollars to the school would have benefited a City of Fairview resident, or residents, plural, as defined here, because the school is comprised of residents from Williamson County and the City of Fairview. So if he donated monies to the school that went directly to City of Fairview residents, and that could be documented from the school or from the American Legion, I believed it would qualify. The second question that I was asked was whether or not the donation of the swing sets at the park would qualify. And my answer was, I believe it would, because those swing sets were installed on city property. Those swing sets, the cost of those would no longer be incurred if they were to be future incurred by the city, and the installation of those, I believed, would meet the spirit of this. Those are the two questions I was asked. Those are the two examples I was provided, and I just gave you the answers I gave to Mr. Vansicle. That was the extent of that conversation, no more and no less. Second discussion came up regarding the issuance of the permit itself. I have explained to Mr. Vansicle, as has the Fire Department, that we believe all of their documents are in accordance with the delivery from the city of a permit, absent one item we need, which is the fire inspection to be done for the site. Everything else that they provided, we agree, meets the regulation. All we are waiting for at this point from the American Legion is a signed document from our Fire Department stating that the tent, once fully stocked, meets the fire code, and they will get their permit that day. They have been explaining this last Thursday, the last Friday, this past Tuesday, this past Wednesday. I cannot make it more clear in any way that that's all that's needed for them to get their permit. So all of the egregious actions that were just described for everything the city said wasn't qualifying as nonprofit activities by the American Legion simply has not in any form, in any way, under any circumstance, been provided to me. Period. It's not there. Secondly, as it relates to the tents that are on the Flying J property and on the Walmart property. Absent of a search warrant by the City of Fairview, we can't simply go to those sites, open tents, and do an inspection of those things. Those tents are closed. We can't walk out there and just simply make ourselves at home on that. So to make sure that we were working through the process to do that thing, to make sure that we're following through, I went to Walmart, spoke to Walmart management, got contact information for whoever we thought was going to be doing the, whoever was putting up the tents. It took Walmart and both Flying J two days to get me that information back. I then, I have confirmation of that. I see, I see that this may be found humorous, but it isn't humorous. That's the process we went through to get the information. So once I got that information and had an email contact for information for TNT, I sent TNT an email, copied them on this ordinance that we have in place, and copied our department heads who are responsible for doing inspections, so that if anyone of them had any contact with any representative, any representative from TNT, that that would be the process for us to go to, to follow. I also included my personal cellphone number. To this moment, I've not received any inquiry via email, phone call, or any other thing asking for that process. We have not received any applications for permits for either of the sites, and we can't ahead of time prosecute someone for fireworks, fireworks sale that hasn't taken place. We don't have the ability to do that. So that's where we are on the process. We welcome the delivery of the permit to the American Legion. All we need is the inspection from the Fire Department. That's what we've asked for. That's what we need. That's what we're waiting on. Once we get that, they're free to move on with their sales. And I'll be glad to answer any question anyone has regarding anything I've just described to you.
Okay. Are we doing that now?
Privilege of the board.
Is Mr. Vansicle here? Really departing from procedure, I'm willing to give you three minutes if you have any comments to make.
Well, I think that Sean.
You'll need to come to the podium and tell us your name and your address, even though we know.
I'm Jim Vansicle. I'm commander of the American Legion post here in Fairview. I live at 7441 Liberty Road here in Fairview. I don't know really where to start, because I supplied Mr. Collins with all the information that he required. Most of the stuff that Sean spoke about was what I gave him also. I've spoken with some of the other commissioners, and the process that we have been going through this year is nothing like we've ever gone through before. The first three years that we sold fireworks, the city was 100% behind us. We applied for the permit and was given it to us almost immediately. Since TNT has come in here, it's been a nightmare for us, and this year has been worse yet. I started on the 10th of May getting all this stuff together, and it took, like Sean said, three weeks to get the structure permit before we could even put the permit, this tent up. The sign permit was given to me the same day that I went and requested it. It's, I feel like, not to belittle Mr. Collins or whatever, but some of the stuff that he's saying is I have a dispute with. So hopefully, we can work through this. We won't be able now to get our tent ready until Monday for the fire inspector to come. And I've spoken with him, and they are going to come Monday morning. We'll be two days behind on selling fireworks. And I think I might have given Sean a little bit of misinformation. We did not totally sell out on fireworks last year. We still have some of them left over. So in past years, we always have, but since the big box come in here, we haven't been able to.
I will say, we have a brand-new ordinance this year. So I think everyone's trying to plow through that, you know, and looking at some of the things that's been brought up. I mean, it's in the new ordinance. Have you requested your fire inspection?
Yes.
And that's scheduled?
That's scheduled for Monday. Because of the weekend and all, the fire marshal wouldn't be able to be there, you know, on Saturday or Sunday. So we scheduled it for Monday. We can't do it on Friday, because once we put the fireworks in the tent, it has to be manned 24 hours a day.
Okay. But that's the typical ruling, in that typical?
That's the state law.
Okay. So, okay. So then you've not requested for that reason. So has the Fairview Fire Chief also done his inspection? Have you requested that?
Right. And he is going to come Monday.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else, since we've departed from procedure completely?
Well, are we discussing this right now?
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, yeah, I have a lot.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to request just a whole lot further comment until down here to, where is it, wherever it is on the agenda.
Vice Mayor, is that good with you?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
I just, Mr. Collins asked if we had any questions, so I was going to ask the questions, but I can wait until the agenda item.
If you'll make notes of your questions.
Oh, I have. They're across from my table here.
Okay. Thank you. Public announcements, awards, and recognitions. Staff comments. Chief Hughes? Are you chit?
Mayor, Chief Hughes is not here tonight. Let's just skip to the Fire Department. Or the Police Department. We'll get to the Fire Department at the next meeting.
I got a little confused. I thought that's not Chief Hughes. Go ahead and talk about the Fire Department.
Yeah. Very much talked about the Fire Department. Right? Anyway, we'll go with the monthly reports. Staffing is still at 23. Fortunate to retain our staffing. We still have one on deployment, but we're getting through that. Overtime's down a little bit for the month. And our training was up, 246 from 280 from previous month. Most of that's been in-house training. We haven't seen anybody off this previous month, stuff we're doing in-house. Operational report here for the calls and self-initiatives went up to 949 for the month. That's representative of those new officers getting out there, us being staffed, they're able to get out and self-initiate quite a bit more. It shows on our statistics. Rest for the month went up from 65 to 80. Domestics up just a tad to three. DUIs up. Drug charges down a little bit, and thefts are remaining the same. Citations are up to 87. And that's, again, is representative of those new guys getting out, and we're fully staffing, can do some proactive measures versus just be reactive with a staff that's down. Accidents down to 16, which is a good thing. Property damage, only 13 of those, three injuries. And again, we're happy to report, once again, for this month, that there's no fatalities. We've not had one of those in a long time. Just for our public relations, because we've announced that the fireworks is back on, that is, signals that most activities are resuming, and we're going to go back to the Shop with a Cop this Christmas. Just want to announce that we start our fundraiser for that at the fireworks show. We'll have a tent, and we just hope people will stop by and see us and help contribute to that cause.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
What is self-initiated calls?
That's, if we're really struggling with staffing, and you're mostly responding to calls, when dispatch calls is a response. It's hard to initiate, because you just are down in staffing, which would be any proactive measure, setting up DUI stops, or we get complaints of speeding in an area, and we go there and set up and try to be proactive in an area. Those are generally self-initiated, things that they're doing outside of a response to a call.
Okay. And second question, did you get your tent moved for the, for your food for the July 3rd event?
I believe so.
Okay. Because I've heard, I've had all sorts of questions about that.
I believe we did.
Okay. That's all I have. Anyone else?
Chief Hughes, how many?
Chief Hughes, okay.
You were the fire chief, right?
Apparently.
Excuse me, Chief Humphries?
Yes.
How many children do we normally sponsor for the Shop with a Cop?
It varies. It has grown, and the last several years, it's been over 30 every time. It's not dropped below 30 since I've been here.
Wow.
Started out the first year, I think it was 11 or 12, moved to 18. It's moved above 30. And it's a very significant Christmas for each one of them. We have a portion of that that is mandatory. We make them buy some clothing items, coats, shoes, and then the rest of it to toys. And it's a, it's a very, a very good Christmas provider with all those children. And we do, the, I will say a little bit for the Fire Department, they set up a booth here also as a fundraiser, and they contribute to their funds to a pancake breakfast that morning before that. So we sort of have an all-inclusive, where we feed them and then go over and do the Shop with a Cop at Walmart.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City manager report, Mr. Collins?
May I have two things for you tonight? The first is mine, the second is Richard Ross to discuss the July 3rd event. But I'm not sure if we can pull up, if we did PowerPoint for. As you, some of you may know, we work routinely to look at some of our traffic complaints that we have that comes from time to time. Obviously, we get routine traffic complaints through the year, speeding, other things that take place. And typically, all of these traffic complaints or the general violations take place during the same time. Typically, it's a window of time after school, before school, a certain time on the weekend and what have you. And it's difficult for us to be able to staff police officers in all of these places at the same time to do some of this work. So we've been working for, or looking for, a couple of ways to inhibit some of the travel in some of the high-traffic areas that we know are a problem. So with that, there are three drives that we know immediately after school, we have some concerns about. And I apologize for the small map you have in front of you, but there's a purpose for this. I'll explain the map, but we're going to set a public hearing for what I'm about to describe to you on the next meeting, July 1, to go over some of these, because there does need to be some public input. But we believe we've come up with a couple of solutions, some warranted traffic solutions that will help in some of the areas of the most concern. Looking at what you have in front of you, White Oak Drive, Dogwood Lane, and Grammar Drive, the drives that go north and south, as you're looking at the map, are frequent areas of high-speed traffic complaint after school and before school. If you look at the traffic routing to the high school and middle school, that area gets you off of Highway 100, kind of gets you off of the main road. It's frequently used by students before and after school, on the weekends, just traffic that doesn't want to go. If you look at the map, and I'll email this to you, but on Grammar Drive, White Dog, White Oak Lane, and Dogwood Lane, at the intersections of those, of those drives, we're looking to install three-way stops at each of the intersections. We believe the traffic warrants are there for the traffic to install the stop signs. They've never been installed there, but those drives have a pretty decent length to them, and the speed can, can get pretty high. So we went out and did some initial studies for those, sight distance and other things. And we believe that each of the intersections that you see highlighted would warrant a three-way stop to help limit some of the traffic issues that we have along those three drives. So that will be the first thing we propose, is installing stop signs at those intersections. The good part about installing stop signs is if they don't work, they're easily removed. So this is not anything that has to be permanent, but we are working on some enforcement to slow the traffic and move it, and that's one area that we know we can work on. The second thing that we can work on is it relates to Dogwood Lane and, well, all the streets, actually, but Grammar Drive for sure. There's a section on Dogwood Lane that runs about 1,500 feet with unimpeded traffic. On Grammar Drive, there's another section of about 1,500 feet of unimpeded traffic. There's no intersection, it's just a straight drive. So what we're going to propose in those two sections are speed tables. And when we say speed tables, we're talking about the pre-manufactured speed tables that you see. In some places, there are black rubberized speed tables that have the yellow hash marks across. You mark ahead of those speed tables. We discussed this with the Fire Department, Police Department. One of the, one of the concerns that you often get is, does that slow down emergency response or other things? If you do a raised concrete speed table or asphalt speed table, that can be the case. But with the pre-manufactured speed tables, that's not an issue. They're speed-rated, so that will assist there. So in that public hearing, we'll have more information to let everyone know exactly what those look like in those intersections. But in that section of town, we believe those solutions will help with the traffic concerns that we've had there. So with that, we have one other area that we get some concerns about. If we could go to the next slide, this is Coles Creek subdivision. So we get three primary, or two concerns regarding Coles Creek as it relates to speeding. The first is when you pull into the subdivision itself. Ironically, there's no speed limit sign posted when you pull into the neighborhood. So the first thing we will propose as you pull into Coles Creek will be a speed limit sign, but it will also be solar-powered with the flashing yellow lights around it. So when you pull in, you see the sign, so you can understand what that, what that speed is as you pull in. The second component that we will look at is, once you get into the neighborhood, into Coles Creek, there are two intersections on Coles Creek Drive, and we would propose the same three-way stop at those, at those intersections. As you pull into Coles Creek, you get to the bottom of the hill, you take a left, there's one section where you can build some speed up, and certainly, we've had those complaints. As you get to the backside of the subdivision or to the right, as you're looking at, at the map, the layout of the road itself slows that down a little bit. That little curve is a little, a greater curve than what it appears on the map. So what we'll propose there is the installation of three-way stops at those intersections. Again, the good thing about three-way stops and stop signs is they're easily removed. But our goal in this is to attempt to resolve some of the concerns we've had regarding speeding through the subdivision. So once we get to the next meeting, we have the public hearing, we'll get you much more information of that. But I do want to let you know that those solutions are underway, and we hope to get moving on those pretty quickly. With that, the other information I have is from Mr. Ross, and it's related to the July 3rd event. So Richard, if you would.
Good evening. So this year, we're having our 10th annual July 3rd celebration. We tried having it last year, but due to the pandemic, we was unable to have it. But this year, thanks to our generous sponsors, we had 26 sponsors of the event. And we are able to have this event along with 10 food vendors and also fun activities for the kids. We'll be having two bands perform at the event. The first band is called Nashville School of Rock, and they have several locations throughout the South as well. And then we also have a band that some of you are familiar with, it's called Rubik's Groove. It's an 80s, 90s tribute band. We'll also have our EMC of the event, which is Joe Dubin from News Channel 4, Big Joe on the Go. He is donating all of his time for the city. And also, Jack FM reached out to us on Monday and started today providing all services by announcing on the radio every single day up until the event for free, and they will be broadcasting at the event for free. They reached out to us and heard about the event, and they wanted to partner with us for the event. Also, we'll have some of you guys in the dunk tank, so I'd like to invite everyone out to come see you guys. And it's just gonna be a great time for kids to have fun, everyone to have fun, and also for everyone to celebrate our great nation. Have any questions?
Any questions?
So how many, just a wild guess, are we expecting?
Based on my conversation with Jack FM and Rubik's Groove, just them alone, they're predicting that they're gonna bring around 4,000 just them.
4,000 people just to see that group?
Yes.
Wow.
Just a layout of this event, in years past, I've spoke to people two years ago, and people have traveled 80-plus miles to come to our event. Most people, they, they come to our event because they don't want to travel to downtown Nashville. This is the next best thing.
How are the fireworks gonna be this year?
Awesome. We are going to have close-proximity fireworks as well. We're gonna be shooting them, shooting them off from our normal location, plus from right behind the stage as well.
Great. Super, super excited. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Collins, was that all of yours?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 10A, Old Business. Vice Mayor?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2021-12, an ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022.
We've heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Uh-huh.
I would like to ask that a line item be added to provide up to $50,000 for our Veterans Park and Historic Village Park for maintenance items and expanded parking and drive into the Veterans Park repairs. This money I see could come from, since there was a conservative, conservative estimate for the property taxes, with the overage that we will get from that, that could be pulled from that extra money.
Mr. Potter, how do we, tell me the...
This is the second final reading.
Second final reading of the ordinance. Has, have we had publication of the ordinance yet without that amendment? I think that's a material amendment to take $50,000 from one line item and move it to another line item. So I believe what we're gonna need to do is, is vote on it tonight, but it would become a first reading, and we would have to move it to the second, to the next, to the next meeting for a second reading with that change.
Can we legally do that? Do we have to have the budget approved by July 1?
So the state requires that our budget be approved by July 1. So if, if there was, if we were going to do that, then my suggestion to keep us within, within the law, Mr. Potter believes this is, is correct, is my suggestion, if that's the case, is to adopt the budget as presented, that you have the second reading for tonight. And then at the next meeting, we could present an amended budget that we're required first and second reading, and that amended budget would include those, those changes. We don't have time between now and July, and June 30 to make the change, re-advertise the budget, and do that work. So, so procedurally, what's being asked, those line items could be changed. However, if we were gonna do that correctly, then my suggestion would be, adopt the budget as you have tonight, and then I would present an amended budget with those two changes. We could go through the first and second reading, just as we have for this budget. We don't have any opportunity other than that, simply because the state requires us to adopt a balanced budget by June 30 of each year.
I think that process is acceptable.
Way until after the...
That would work as well. But I understand what Commissioner Anderson's wanting to do. I just think that we've already read it on first reading, we've had a publication. It's not what I would consider an immaterial modification. So I think that we would have to, we would have to have two readings. And since we're coming up on a deadline with the state, we can amend our budget subsequent to the deadline.
Any other discussion?
I've got a quick question, Mayor. So how do we, with the funds that we've not identified yet, because we don't know if we're gonna have a positive or negative, if we do have a positive, is that money that we earmark? How does that, how do we identify if we are going to have an excess and then earmark that money?
Yes, so Commissioner Dawson, the way that works is, and let's take the property tax as an example for what we're talking about. And let's say that those dollars come in more than what's budgeted for. As previously discussed, at the last VOCB and at the Focus on Fairview event, we amend our budget at least once through the year. Most of our, all of our property tax really comes in, in about four months, November through February. So at the end of that time, when all of those dollars come in and we amend the budget, we would simply amend that revenue item. So let's assume that we budgeted 2.5 million, and it comes in 2.6. Well, when we do the amended budget, then we would show that revenue as 2.6 million. Obviously, that would be an extra $100,000. So then we would either allocate that $100,000, or I would transfer the $100,000 to the reserve fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll just, Mayor, I'll just add the comment. I think, I like the spirit, like what Ted did, I think we're about to do this Parks Master Plan, hopefully in a vision. We're gonna create a list of improvements that we want to make. If we have excess reserves, we could make those, those plans and those projects, plan accordingly in that document, hopefully. I think, you know, will 50,000 cover the parking? What is our plan? What's our future plan? What's it gonna look like when it's done? I think we have money budgeted for, to design some layouts for those areas, maybe from the tree fund or something like that originally, we've talked about before, to kind of create an overall future vision or layout, and then we can kind of budget or quote from there. That is just my feedback from there.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second on the, on the floor to... No more discussion. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Old Business item B, second and final reading of ordinance 2021-14. Vice Mayor?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2021-14, an ordinance to establish an updated occupational safety and health program plan, devise rules and regulations, and to provide a safety director and the implementation of such program plan.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. New Business, 11A, Resolution 10-21. Vice Mayor?
Resolution 10-21, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, regarding the vacation of right-of-way at Glen, I'm sorry, at Glavenshire Court, Hairstone Drive, Bogner Trail, and a section of Edinburgh Drive.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've spoken to city manager about this resolution, and I would respectfully ask that it be deferred to the next meeting. I'd like to share the draft resolution with the developer's attorney and have a conversation with him about it before we take action on that vacation.
So do we need a motion to defer, or can we just defer?
Be a motion to defer to the next meeting, because the agenda's been approved.
Motion to defer?
Second. We have a motion and a second to defer. Is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. 11B, Resolution 11-21. Vice Mayor?
Resolution 11-21, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating certain fire service equipment as surplus and authorizing the disposal of the items.
We've heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Resolution 12-21. Vice Mayor?
Resolution 12-21, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to engage the Tennessee Armory, sorry, the Tennessee Army National Guard regarding the construction of a police department firearms training facility to negotiate any and all service agreements between the City of Fairview and the Tennessee Army National Guard regarding the construction of a police firearms training facility, and to execute any and all document, documents regarding the construction of a police firearms training
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Collins, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, as you may be aware, for some time, we've been working on a firearms training facility for our Fire Department. We've expressed the need for that. We've known it for some time. Through some communications we had with Representative Whitson, who has some, who has contacts with the Tennessee Army National Guard, and a follow-up to that with, from Chief Humphries in our Police Department, there are opportunities that arise year to year with the Tennessee Army National Guard, where they will do civil work on specific projects and partner with municipalities or local governments to do that. One of the things they do is civil work regarding firearms training, training centers, firing, firing ranges, and similar work such as that. They have agreed through discussion, there's certainly no agreements in place, but they have at least expressed to us that they would be interested and have met with us on-site regarding some of the civil work that would be necessary to do that. When I say civil work, I mean groundwork, dirt work, road base, stormwater, storm management, and those sorts of things. So they would be a substantial partner in this. This would be done at no cost to the city. And it would be spearheaded by their engineering group out of Nashville. So in following up with that, and after meeting with them on-site, getting some information back and forth, that this is a project they're interested in doing with us and partnering for us, it's an unbelievable opportunity for the city and certainly a great partnership with the state. Representative Whitson has reached out again a couple of times to consult, to confirm our interest and participation in this, and that's what I have for you tonight, is a document, or approval to execute those agreements and those documents when we get to that point, so we can partner with them for this project.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Any questions?
Mayor, I'll just ask, so they'll come in, they'll do the civil site work, the construction of a building would then be on us? Would that come back? Or like, how does that process work? Do they create a site plan and just bring it to us, or?
Yes, Commissioner Butler, so what we would do is, we would, and Kevin Blackburn in our engineering office would do this, so we would be responsible for the site design, stormwater, drawing of the roads, all of that work that we would need to be done. Once we drew that... Once we drew that, all of that work would go for review from the National Guard office. They then partner with you to submit all of the documents to the State of Tennessee, TDEC, everyone else, to make sure those designs meet whatever standards, and then effectively they would do all of the dirt work and groundwork. So if we remove trees or other things to get that out of the way, then the guard would come in, they will be here for a couple of weeks, they will stay on-site, and they would do all of the excavation work, all of the road bed construction, parking construction, they would install all of the underground stormwater management. So the only thing we would have to do as a city after that will be what you actually see visibly, any building we had, improvements, asphalt, that sort of thing, we would need to do, but the actual base work for the entire site, they would do.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. 11D, Resolution 13-21, Vice Mayor.
Resolution 13-21, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee with R-40, single-family, low-density zoning, 114 acres, map 021, parcel 062.00 and 063.00, property owners Norman Lampley. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? And this is only for a public hearing? There was a question mark after that.
Yes, Mayor, this would be your first reading of a set of public hearing for the actual vote.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'll just add some context to it. That parcel sits on northwest there. Adjacent kind of to the northwest is the Brownland Farms parcel that has been previously approved for, I think, around 600 or more lots. It's currently an MGA zoning in Williamson County, which would be approved for one-acre lots, so they could go to Williamson County right now and rezone that property as a one-acre piece, which is similar to the R-40 they're asking for. If they built homes in the county, we would not receive any taxes for our police and fire, even though our police and fire will still service it, any taxes for our roads. I think there's going to be some road improvements through there. So it's just, I think it makes sense, the municipal growth area that the Williamson County designates is where they're trying to direct the growth, straight from the comprehensive plan from Williamson County, that this would be kind of the area of the future that the Fairview and Williamson County has agreed upon would be annexed in and developed in a particular way based off the 2040 plan. So that's just some feedback or general background of the area now that it sits.
But this is just to, this is just to set the public hearing. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. 11E, Ordinance 2021-13, Vice Mayor.
Ordinance 2021-13, first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Williamson County, Tennessee, tax map 046, part of parcel 087.00 from CG Commercial General to RM12 Multifamily Residential, owner, estate of Laura Catherine Sullivan, agent, I'm not sure how to pronounce this, maybe Chateau, Choteau, something Creek Holdings LLC.
I believe it's 37.14 acres. So we've heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Sullivan, do you all want to come up and? I know it's been through the planning commission, I missed that.
Barry Sullivan. I'm involved in this project, Ben Eastep as well, and questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just some background and content on this. This is next to Jingo there, Jefferson's, it's on Highway 100. It was at the planning commission twice. The original request was an RM20, which would have been a higher-density project. The planning commission denied it on a five-to-four vote, I believe. The applicant decided to lower the density amount and come back in front of the planning commission, and the planning commission voted eight-zero at the last planning commission meeting in regard to, in favor in regard to the RM12 and the lower density.
Fiver unanimous.
Any other discussion or any questions?
And I think, and just to confirm, this would have another reading, and this would have a public hearing prior to the second reading, so any adjacent property owners would be notified if there was a second reading. You'd have a public hearing before that meeting where they could come and speak and ask questions.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing no discussion. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Anderson, excuse me.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. 11F, City Parks Operational Plan Committee, Commissioner Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to take a little bit of time here to talk about the City Park Operational Plan Committee and what we're going to do to try to reach out to the community to form our committee. We have a Buoy Nature Park master plan that a lot of people worked on in 2015. That is a wonderful document, and I think what we're going to, our book of business is really to update that plan. This committee is going to be an advisory committee to the BOC. Now, we're going to be working with all of the established groups, the American Legion, for example, the Friends of Buoy Nature Park. We want to build a business plan for the Fairview City Parks, which include the Veterans Memorial Park, the Historical Village, and the Buoy Nature Park. And my proposal to form this committee, I would like this to be six citizens from the City of Fairview, two of those that have lived here zero to five years, two of those that have lived here five to 10 years, and then two of those living here greater than 10 years. I would also like to see the candidates not be members of any group associated with the Fairview Parks. Reason for that, I would like to have more people included in the direction of the Fairview Parks, and to take a fresh and objective look at what we currently have and where our parks can be. Now, saying that, once again, we want to work very closely with those groups that are already established with the parks, because we know that they have the history of those parks and where we are at today and what work has been done. We also are going to be working extremely close with the city employees that maintain and work in those parks every day as well. So that is what I would like to see for that committee. I think the work yet to be done with updating those plans and getting a true business plan together for our wonderful parks that we have here in the city is very important. When we have money available, we should have a plan to know exactly where that money is going, when that money becomes available. We should know when our next structure is going in at the Veterans Park. We should have this business plan ready to go when those funds are available. We should know when our next naturalist is going to be put into place at Buoy Nature Park. We should have all of these answers ready for these questions. So really excited about getting to work with this, forming our committee, and then working with our groups that we already have established here in the City of Fairview.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Any discussion?
Mayor, so do we need to make a motion to create that committee? And then what is the plan or the vision? I guess if we're going to try and use an outside third-party to kind of steer that committee, this would just kind of be a steering committee that would collect ideas, thoughts from all the different groups and kind of help guide and direct for that document. Is that correct?
Mr. Potter, do we need the motion?
I think you will need some type of motion, recognizing this, and then probably, you know, we're going to have to, I guess, draft something outlining what Commissioner Dawson has told us. So I mean, probably, you might not need a motion now, but you need the directive. We could, for staff, to get that drafted and bring it back before you, in accord, it's with Commissioner Dawson's request, and then we'll have to vote on something at a later meeting. I think it's a better way to do it.
Okay, then...
But we can do that. I'm taking it from you that that's what we're being asked to do, and if Commissioner Dawson could send us what you just said, that'd be great.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, Treehouse Playground Covered Pavilion and Picnic Tables, Commissioner Anderson. I mean, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Anderson, I'm just reading what the paper says.
It's fine. I'm just, it, no titles, I'm just up here to try to be the voice of our community. Six days a week, I'm in the same place in my business, and people come in constantly and they're, you know, they have ideas and things that they'd like for me to bring before the board. I kind of sift through those, and one item was brought to me that I thought was, you know, really a great idea. When the Treehouse Playground or the playground at Buoy Park existed before, there was a little area with some picnic tables. It wasn't covered or anything, but I think maybe there were just two. It made it where families that bring young children or grandparents that bring their grandkids to the playground had a place where they could have lunch and maybe not do it near, you know, on the playground equipment or in the, you know, playground area. That's probably not a good idea. Also, they wouldn't have to drive all the way down to a pavilion that could be rented out at the time, or, you know, it's so far away from the playground. So I thought that was a great idea to, and since the funds have increased quite a bit by more fundraising this week, I feel like we're going to have an excess, and I know that excess would go towards maintenance, but I thought this was a great idea to maybe put some of it towards, is having some sort of beside the playground, a covered pavilion where there could be picnic tables for, you know, parents with their children to have lunch, or grandparents, or, you know, anybody to be able to have lunch or eat right there and not try to eat in their car, go to another pavilion that's pretty far away, or eat near the playground equipment.
Mr. Butler, is there something like that in the original design?
To my knowledge, off the top of my head, I don't think there's any picnic tables or covered areas. There's some benches and stuff designed, but no picnic tables or covered areas there.
Mr. Collins, since we've already passed an ordinance approving that design, what would be the process if we wanted to change that design to add these items?
I think it depends on the nature of the intent, the, what has been approved by ordinance as a design of the playground. So if you're talking about something that exists within the footprint of the playground as approved, I think the playground design would have to be changed. If you're talking about something that exists outside of the footprint of the playground, then I don't, I don't think there will be anything necessary to do. Just when it comes time to do that, if those funds are available, you just vote to approve the funds to construct the covering the picnic tables.
So does the Treehouse Play, the new design, does that take the whole footprint of the O, or do we have to go to the conservation?
Obviously, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe the, I believe what was presented was the playground that would fit the footprint of the previously installed playground. So if I understand correctly, that's where we were, the fence line would be the fence line, you just have new equipment and new fencing. So if the suggestion is to install a covered pavilion and picnic tables within the fence line, so to speak, then I believe the approved plan would have to be amended. If the suggestion is that a covered pavilion and picnic tables be installed outside of the fence line, then I think there's no action to be taken at this time, except for when the playground is done and the funds are available, you just simply vote at that time to construct the covered pavilion and the picnic tables, as I understand.
That's what I was suggesting, not inside the footprint, but if you remember, there was a picnic table or two right outside where the path went right up to the entrance to the playground. So that's what I was suggesting, is right outside, but close enough too, that, you know, the children and parents or grandparents could have their lunch and not have to leave the playground, because I think that, I saw that happen quite a bit, where they would eat their lunch while they were out there, you know, playing at the playground.
I'll just ask a question. As we get closer to funds, and we're going to have, all the funds remitted by the end of the year, we kind of know what we're at. If there isn't excess, will we have a discussion of, here's the excess amount, we could add, or we could go to the maintenance fund? So maybe at that time, November, December, will we have that conversation of, you know, there was $250,000 given to us, we're 100 or 50 over, and we can apply this to something else? Is that a discussion that we maybe had?
Yes, sir. So the discussion in the most recent resolution was that all funds for the playground project are to be remitted to the city by December 29, and then whatever bond dollars come with that. So let's say we're over on that project, and the playground is what the playground is. At that time, you would decide what to do with the overage. The discussion was, any funds remitted to the city after December 29 of this year would go to future maintenance. So once we get into that and their funds additional, then if it covered the cost of this, then certainly you would just vote to expend those dollars for that thing. I would also suggest, as you're looking at that, the location of those, and Commissioner Anderson's right, you step up and you have those things, there's an open area, there's a, if you walk up now, or there has been a little small covered, like a gazebo, if you walk up there now, it's close, if you walk up the sidewalk, you have the gazebo, and it's under the canopy, I mean, outside of the canopy of the trees. So I think anywhere in that area that you wouldn't have to remove trees and install that between that area would be the suitable spot, and it would also add additional shade in that unshaded area that you have now. So I think, looking at that, if we're going to do that and put those dollars in, I would suggest that be the location, fit the need or the suggestion that was brought about as far as the function of it, and just identify that location to accomplish both those goals.
Satisfy your intent?
Yes.
I'll also say, hopefully Commissioner Dawson's taking notes for his Parks Committee, and I think he'll have that done by that time when we discuss this.
I think you're right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? 11H, City of Fairview Fireworks Ordinance, Vice Mayor.
If, if it's okay, I'd like to go last.
That is last, it's your item.
Okay, so I'd like to go last.
Okay. You want me to talk first?
Please.
Okay. You know, so this fireworks ordinance, you know, in my mind, it's easy, it's no big deal, and I'm very quickly learning, nothing is easy, and nothing is quickly done. It's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately. I've done a lot of research into fireworks ordinance now and what the state mandate is for a state license for fireworks, who comes and inspects the tent, and many things. So I just wanted to kind of educate really everybody quickly on the state license, the state license that they give a person for selling fireworks. You actually request that, fill a paperwork out, and get a license. And on that license, on the back of that license, it shows the municipalities that you can sell fireworks in. On one side, it has the list of the municipalities that you can sell fireworks in that has no ordinance about selling fireworks. On the other side, there's a list of municipalities that say they have an ordinance that you cannot sell fireworks. And then in the list that say that you can sell fireworks, they have a list of municipalities that have a little asterisk beside their name. Fairview has an asterisk, which means we have... Fairview has an asterix, which means we have an ordinance, not banning the sale of fireworks, but there is some restriction on the sale of fireworks. The way that this works, once the vendor or group gets the state license, before they can start selling, they have to have a state inspection from the Fire Marshal's Office. That's where either the State Fire Marshal comes out and inspects the tent to make sure they have fire extinguishers and all of the other things listed on the checkoff list. The State Fire Marshal's Office can also give that duty to an agent of the state. In this case, it's the Fairview Fire Department. The Fairview Fire Department is the agent of the State Fire Marshal's Office and they will be doing the inspection here in the City of Fairview. So, the question is, we have an ordinance, can this fire department, which is an agent of the state, say, no, you can't sell here because we have an ordinance? And I got a ruling from the State Fire Marshal's Office, from their council, saying the only thing that the state will enforce is a fireworks ban. So, if we have an ordinance banning the sale of fireworks, they will not send an inspector to inspect the tent. Anything other, they will send an inspector and they will not enforce any other ordinance. So, in this case, anybody that is putting up a tent is going to sell, our fire department has to, under the, under the state rules, go and inspect the tent. So, here's the situation that we're in currently. We have the American Legion that is putting a tent up, they're gonna have their state inspection by the Fairview Fire Department. And we may have other people putting tents up and they may be getting a state inspection as well because they have a state fireworks license. My question is this, we have an ordinance and what can we do to enforce that ordinance? And looking into that ordinance, if somebody breaks an ordinance, we can charge them $50 a day. That's enforcement for the city. And my question, and Mr. Potter, this is where we go a little bit further. You know, we work extremely hard in developing these ordinance, not only to keep people safe, but it's the right thing for our community. Ultimately, when we vote up here an ordinance, it's on behalf of the community that have voted us into these seats. And $50 a day just, it doesn't cut it with, with ordinances. So, my question, Mr. Potter, if we do go down this line, if we have other people come into the city that are not following our ordinance specifically with fireworks, where do we go from here, other than going up to them, telling them that they're in violation if they don't pull a permit, for example, and start selling fireworks? We go down the road of telling them, okay, it's gonna be $50 a day? Where do we go from there after telling them it's gonna be a $50 fine per day? What, what are our options or legal options?
Well, you know, Commissioner Dawson, ordinances are always enforced by a $50 fine. That's, that's statewide. That's what our law allows cities to charge people for violation of city ordinances. So, that's one thing you can do, as you've addressed, you can have your law enforcement officials go to them, tell them that they're in violation of the, of the permit, that they're acting without a permit, that they need to stop and shut it down. They may or may not do that. They can't be arrested for not doing that. They can be cited for ordinance violation. They can be fined every day. I think that that's, court would say that that's a separate occurrence, a daily occurrence. I don't think a court would say each sale of a firework is an occurrence. I think they would say a daily occurrence would be a violation of ordinance. Beyond that, I think that, and you and I talked by phone about this on Friday, I think, beyond that, what the city could do is file a civil action in Williamson County Chancery Court, naming a particular defendant if someone is violating an ordinance. And on behalf of the City of Fairview, ask a court to enjoin them from any further sale of fireworks. And if they fail to do that, then they could be arguably punished for contempt of court. And that would be done by filing a verified complaint along with an affidavit from some city official verifying that this is happening in violation of the ordinance. As city attorney, that could be taken to a chancellor, filed in Chancery Court in Williamson County and we could ask the chancellor to issue an ex parte restraining order and he or she would, if they thought it had merit, could sign that. That would enjoin them for up to a couple of weeks. Within that period of time, there has to be a hearing held. And presumably, the court might order that the city post some type of bond assurity to ensure that the person isn't being wrongly enjoined because of their being wrongly enjoined. You go and shut down somebody's business and they were inappropriately shut down, you know, you're causing them damage. And then there would be a hearing and the judge would determine within a couple of weeks whether or not the injunction was appropriately issued or not. So, yeah, that's the, that's the other step. That's the next thing that could be done. City's just gonna have to make a decision if that's what it wants to do. And I, I think from talking to Mr. Collins, there haven't been any other permits submitted to the city, nor do we have any knowledge yet of anyone selling fireworks. We have, somebody's put up a tent. So, that's about what we know. Okay?
I'm sorry.
And so, I don't think that you have enough information yet to go get an injunction against anybody. But the moment that we see somebody, you know, stocking it with fireworks or attempting to sell fireworks, you can, because it can be done fairly quickly. But I wouldn't advise you doing it yet.
Sure. What, what is the timeframe that you would be looking at that? So, let's say Monday, somebody started selling fireworks without a permit. What does that timeframe look like?
I think you can probably get it filed within a day and then, you know, I don't know how quickly the court will sign it and review it. Typically, they will do that pretty quickly, though. You take it to the clerk and master's office in Franklin and ask, tell them you need a judge to review it and issue an injunction and, you know, they will typically act on it expeditiously, but, you know, it's not automatic.
Okay.
Commissioner Dawson, one thing I would add to that is that would require a vote resolution by the BOC directing the city attorney to file that injunction. So, I would encourage you to keep that in mind. If that's where you were, then you'd have to call, you would need to call a special call meeting to facilitate that request, should you, should you decide to do so.
I have two questions. So, do I understand that if, let's, let's use TNT because that's the name I hear, bannered around. So, if they do start selling fireworks and they're cited, and they're cited the next day, do I understand correctly that there is a possibility of losing their license statewide?
I don't know the answer to that. I've not researched that.
And also, if the BOC were to go down that path, I realize you don't know exactly, but kind of, sort of, what would be the cost incurred with that, going through that court procedure?
You pay the city attorney by the hour. So, you know, we charge you by the hour for our time. I mean, it would be the time it would take to draft a petition, have an affidavit prepared, drive it to Franklin, get it filed. It, it's difficult to say how much it would cost. I don't, I don't know how much it would cost.
Thank you, sir.
Quick question, and Mr. Collins, maybe you can help me with this. So, a special call meeting, could we vote on that today to say if a party started selling fireworks on Monday, that we would file the petition?
No, sir. I, I think what you would need to do to, to make sure everything is, is qualified because there would be some question. If that's your preference, then my suggestion would be, if that's, you believe that's the direction you're gonna go, my suggestion would be for the BOC tonight to schedule tonight a, a special call meeting for sometime early next week. In the event you chose to do that, if that became unnecessary, you simply cancel the meeting. But I don't believe you can do an if-then scheduling of, of, and of a special call meeting. I think you need to call it and if you decide to call it, you can later cancel it. So, that would be my suggestion to you, is if that's the avenue you think you want to take. My suggestion would be schedule that meeting tonight for whenever you think you want to have it and then use it as, as available.
Okay. You said to qualify. What were, what would be those qualifications? You said a specially held meeting, let's say Monday, for qualifiers. If somebody is selling fireworks without a permit, I mean, that would be the qualifier, correct?
I think that's a BOC decision. I, I think what, you're gonna have to state the reason that you're having the special call meeting won't be considered. So, I think what you would be doing would be calling a special call meeting, the purpose of that to, to consider filing an injunction regarding violation of municipal ordinance. Mr. Potter can maybe elaborate on that, but I think that's what you need to do. And then if you have the meeting, so be it, you cover it, and if you don't, you don't.
So, am I understanding this discussion, that instead of us having the police department go out and cite them, we would just automatically jump to a court injunction?
I don't think so.
I think a, I'm anticipating what questions you would get from a chancellor. And the questions might be, what have they done? Well, you can't just say, sir, they've put a tent up. It's not sufficient. Okay? The next question might be, well, have you cited them yet for an ordinance violation? City's got enforcement powers yet. What has the city done? And I don't think it would be appropriate to say, Judge, we've done nothing, we just want to do it this way. So, I think that we have to take some step to enforce it because candidly, getting cited for not having a permit might be enough for some offenders. It might.
Right.
But if you cite them and they're continuing to violate, then I think that we should take, you know, consider taking some, some emergency action. And that's, and what, that, that type of legal action is called extraordinary relief because you're doing it ex parte and the other side's not getting an opportunity to be heard yet. Okay? So, we call that extraordinary relief and the court looks at those things very critically. They want to know, you know, what have you done? What reasonable measures have you taken? Is there a high likelihood of success on the merits and do I believe that they're actually offending based on what sworn testimony I've seen in front of me? That's the verified complaint, the affidavit we file. And, okay, Mr. Potter, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna grant you your injunction and we're gonna have a court hearing in seven days at 1:00 in the afternoon. Okay? I also have to know who to serve, right? Who to give notice to. I don't know that yet. I've learned a lot of this tonight, once I got to the meeting. But, you know, we would have to know what entity to put on notice, what entity to name as a defendant. And so, presumably, we could find that, that there are, be a registered entity with the Secretary of State's office in some state. Right? So... But I guess what I'm telling you is, in sum, my, my advice would be that we need to wait and see what happens. And once we see some material action to violate one of our ordinances, we immediately cite them for an ordinance violation and see what they do once they're cited. That's what I think ought to happen because that would put me in a much better position when I'm trying to ask a judge why I want the, Chancery, Chancery Court's gonna go, really? You want us to weigh in on a city ordinance? That's what you're wanting us to do? What has the city done yet? That'd be the first, be the first thing we get asked.
I think that's fair. We should make sure that we do our due diligence if they are not following our ordinance. And if it would be better to have a special called meeting, maybe a week after that Monday, just so anybody knows that we, we are serious about our ordinances and that, that may be something good as well.
I don't, I don't even know, I'm sure somebody here's looked this up. When are fireworks sales? When do they begin?
Sunday. Sunday.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may add, just, so the ordinance reads, to sell, store, offer for sale, ship or cause to be shipped into the City of Fairview. So, as soon as fireworks would be on site, they would have shipped and they would have started to store.
I think, I think that if they do any of those things without a permit...
Would be a violation.
Yes.
And so, according to their website, they're currently offering fireworks sale services as opening on the 20th on Sunday and then the 21st on Monday. So, they're, they're kind of already offering the services, they're advertising that we're gonna be selling fireworks. So, I don't know if there's a way to just ask our, our police to, to check on Sunday or Monday if that's, if they've already shipped or...
I think that would be prudent. It's the first I've heard of that, but that would be prudent.
The other question, is, is there a temporary structure permit that those, that those tents should have?
Mr. Butler, the temporary structure permit is a, is a free permit that the city issues and all we do is upon the request of the petitioner, go out and ensure that the tent is constructed to a safe design. When we get the request, we go. Until we do, we don't.
So, are they in violation of another ordinance? Is there two ordinances that they're violating if that, if they don't have a...
That's a policy that I don't, that would be, there's no provision within that ordinance that it'd be punishable. It's, it's simply a no-cost tent inspection permit.
But as far as we know at this moment, they've not pulled a permit, they've not sold the first firecracker, they've not done anything, and as you said earlier, unless we think they've done, we have to get a warrant to look inside that tent.
Mayor, I don't believe the city has authority to arbitrarily go on that property, open their tent when it's closed and make some inspection. I just don't think we have the authority to do that. After that process, whenever it goes, because there's also nothing in here out there, there's nothing in the ordinance that says anyone is exempt from applying for a permit, which I think is where we are, to go through the process for applying. So, we don't know that that's there. Also, as it relates to this, the, the very first line on the amended ordinance says, it shall be unlawful for any person other than a person who is a member of a registered nonprofit organization identified by Section 7503B below to sell, offer, store, sell, offer, sell, ship or cause to be shipped. At this point, we don't know that those tents, although there's advertising, we don't know that that's for-profit, nonprofit. We have no clue what, what that is, so...
But we do know that they don't have a permit if they don't have one in hand when, when they arrive.
Commissioner Butler, we, we also don't know that they're not a nonprofit.
But, but they don't have a permit.
A nonprofit doesn't, a nonprofit doesn't have to have a permit.
No, you, they have to pull a permit.
No, sir. No, sir. It shall be unlawful for any person other than a person who is a member of a registered nonprofit identified in this section below to sell, store or offer for sale or ship or cause to be shipped into the City of Fairview. So, if they're a member of a nonprofit, they can ship, cause to be shipped, deliver or other things. It's only if they're not a member of a nonprofit. At this point, we don't know if they're a nonprofit or not.
But they would not have a permit to sell fireworks in Fairview. And, and it goes on to say, approved out to Internal Revenue Service 501(c)(3). In order to obtain a permit, you have to have a permit to sell. So, yeah, they could be a member of a nonprofit, but they would not be, they would not have an active permit to sell fireworks.
Understood. And in that instance, they have to submit application to the city and we would review that application, just as we would any other.
Yeah.
But, and I'm sorry to keep asking this, but I just want to make sure that I understand. So, until they come and ask for a permit and you say you have to prove that you're a 501(c)(3), they've done nothing illegal? And then they have done anything illegal?
We couldn't say, we couldn't say they have or not. We, we, we just don't know.
As far as we know. I mean, they've not sold any fireworks, they've not done anything to violate this, this ordinance at this moment in time.
Not that I'm aware of. And time will bear that out.
But according to the ordinance, as soon as they ship, store or offer for sale, and they're currently offering services online, you can't in-person buy one, but they, as soon as it shipped or soon it was on site, it would be in violation of the ordinance, the way it reads.
But we don't know they have stock yet, right?
As soon as it ships, it would be a violation. It would not be currently a violation, as soon as it stores or ships.
I don't think I've heard this much discussion over ordinances about anything in this city. This gets very confusing. But how do we...how could we police when something is shipped? Mr. Potter, is there any way the city can police that? I mean, I have stuff shipped from Amazon all the time, and how would anyone know when I had it shipped?
If it's on site, it was shipped to the site.
Right. But you were saying if it's even signed up to be shipped?
I didn't say that. If you see it on site, it was shipped there. It is being stored there, which is also in violation of the ordinance.
Okay. But as far as we know...
Well, we can send an officer out there to ask some questions, investigate if we wanted to. So, I mean, I think the objective is to keep them from selling fireworks if they're not complying with our ordinance, right? So...
Right.
And as Mr. Collins has pointed out, they may...the tent may have, say, one thing, but the person who has shipped or stored may be allowed to do it. You don't have to have a permit to do those things if you're a nonprofit organization. So we're going to have somebody go ask them some questions. You know, what do you plan to do here? What have you done? Have you seen the city ordinance? You know, the city ordinances prohibits just anyone from selling fireworks. I know Mr. Collins has sent a copy of this ordinance to the address that was provided to him by Walmart, and hasn't gotten a response. So the issue is to go talk to them, put them on notice. I think maybe a uniformed officer would help, say, you know, there's this concern. You may not be able to sell fireworks here. You understand that. And so if we find out that they are not a nonprofit, or they attempt to sell without a permit, then they're in violation of the city ordinance. We cite them.
Mr. Collins, would that be a reasonable request?
But I agree with him. I don't think that we can go out there and search inside their tent. It's closed. Can't do that.
And I presume we would have to find someone actually at the tent to ask those questions, or can we ask those questions on the Flying J and Walmart personnel?
A police officer. I think I'd leave that up to Officer Chief Humphries' staff.
Mayor, I'll give the police department and see what opportunities are there for that request.
Any other discussion?
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything before I get started?
We were talking about calling a special meeting if something happened where an entity did start selling fireworks. Do we need to consider that, let's say, on the 28th? We give them a full week of noncompliance. Do we consider scheduling that? I guess that's what we need to determine as a board.
What's our requirement for notification, publication for a special call meeting? Timeline?
Mayor, I believe it's 12 hours, but you're well within the window if you're looking to do this on a week from Monday.
There's reasonable notice has been debated for years. There's some case law out there, I think, to support the argument that it's two days. I think a court will uphold two days, unless there's some ordinance that sets it at a different time, and I don't think we have one in this city. So a couple of days of notice for a special call meeting, I think, would be sufficient. Certainly a week would be very sufficient.
I didn't hear the last part of that.
So certainly a week, as was discussed, would be very sufficient, but I think you could do it as short as two days if you got notice posted in public places and placed on our city website.
So does an action need to be taken on that? Any kind of vote, or does somebody would ask for it to be called?
Or would it make more sense to wait until Monday to see if they actually do anything, and then we could have a meeting on Wednesday? There was a question mark behind that one, too.
Mayor, both of those are the privilege of the board. I believe two days is the discussion, so if that, it'd be the privilege of the board to decide how they want to handle the meeting outside of those two days.
Can I make a motion for that? I would like to make a motion to go ahead and call a special meeting on the 28th in preparation for people selling fireworks without a permit. And if we see that this remedies itself, we can always cancel the meeting.
Commissioner Dawson, we're going to need to establish a time for that meeting.
And 7:00, 7:00 p.m.
Are you saying Monday?
Monday, the 28th, 7:00 p.m.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Any discussion?
So can the paperwork for filing an injunction already be drawn up in preparation for doing that?
Yes, ma'am. If we...I'm certain that before we have a meeting on the 28th, I will have been informed that it's happening.
Also, waiting a whole week when they can start selling on Sunday, the damage is done. They've sold, and I just feel like a week of selling, they're going to have sold a majority of their fireworks. So I just feel like we're calling a meeting that's going to be too little, too late.
Asking Commissioner Dawson to amend his motion or change his motion?
I feel like they're going to start selling on Sunday, when our staff is not here.
Well, they're going to have to get a state inspection by the fire department, so the fire department will be going out there.
And who says they can't get that tomorrow?
They can't get that tomorrow. That's got to be actually scheduled with the fire department. So they have to set the fireworks up. The fireworks have to be in the tent. The fire department has to go out there and do the state inspection, so the quickest...
Do we know that they haven't?
Commissioners, if I may, there's been no application submitted to the city. There's been no information given to the city. There's been nothing scheduled on behalf of anyone for this thing. So we don't have the information to do that. Now, if someone came in tomorrow morning, and it met the guidelines, and we were able to go through the process, we would schedule the inspection. We would not delay and inspect those things. But as of this meeting, there's been nothing submitted for review or inspection.
Walmart has confirmed with me that TNT has set up the tents with intent to sell fireworks. So why would they say that if they weren't intending to sell fireworks?
Commissioner, I can't possibly explain why Walmart would say what TNT is doing. I can only express to you what has not been submitted to the city.
I would just say, if Walmart were mine, and someone was setting up a big tent in my parking lot, they would have to tell me what they were setting the tent up for. Okay.
So if they have not received a state inspection, so technically maybe the state could even end their sales if they're not in compliance with the state fireworks sales. Would that be correct if they have not received a state inspection? I know that's not our enforcement, but our fire department does that inspection, right?
The city fire department conducts the state inspection. I have submitted to TNT the revised ordinance that you have before you. They are in receipt of this ordinance. That's the most that the city knows.
But yet, they put up a tent anyway. Two tents.
And I'm not sure if that's a question or a comment, Commissioner. I don't...
Despite what...despite what you sent them, they've put up tents anyway.
Weren't the tents already...
No, the tents were already in existence.
Okay. Despite what you've sent them, they've left the tents up and not said, we're not going to get a permit here to sell fireworks, so we need to take our tents down and go somewhere else and make our $100,000 versus not make our $100,000 per tent and just leave our tents up.
I think we're asking the city manager to try to guess what TNT is thinking.
I'm not sure if that's a question or a comment, Commissioner. I don't...I apologize. I don't know.
I'm going to back up, because I have notes that I'd like to go through. Do we have to vote on whatever we're doing right now?
Mr. Potter, we have a motion, a second on the floor about this agenda item.
Now, hold on a minute, because I've got things I want to discuss. Do I need to do that now?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, thank you.
The only motion I heard was a motion to set a special call meeting on the 28th at 7:00 p.m., and it was seconded, but I don't know. I didn't hear any other action.
Okay. My question is, but once we do that, we can still come back to this agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion about that motion and second? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Commissioner...Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
No. Motion passes. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Myself and the other Board of Commissioner members here have been elected by the citizens of this community. We are their voice, and we are held to uphold the laws and the ordinance of the City of Fairview. We also are responsible to our citizens to make sure that the city staff is upholding the laws and enforcing the city ordinances. I've had so many people come to me about this situation, and this is a major concern of mine. We have a lot of eyes watching us right now to see how we're going to handle allowing someone to do something against one of our city ordinances and just give them a $50 fine per day. If someone's making $100,000, which they do, on a fireworks tent, do you think $50 is going to deter them? It's not. Second of all, we're about to visit our food truck ordinances. So what happens when we set these ordinances up for our food trucks, and somebody says, $50? That doesn't bother me. I'm just going to go ahead and do what I want to do, because look what happened with the fireworks situation. They were fined $50, and they continued to sell. And there was a special called meeting a week later, that by that time, they've already sold. They've already done the damage. They've already, you know, broke the ordinance and got fined $50, which they're not going to care about. That's my concern. Why have ordinances if they're not going to be followed?
Vice Mayor Anderson, I think I gave you the opportunity to ask or to amend the date of the special call meeting. So we did not have to wait until June 28th. You could have asked to amend that date.
I am just merely making my comments.
Okay. I would just make your mind.
I have been asked several questions by our community. As you know, I'm in the same place all day, every day, and I welcome people to come into my business and talk to me about issues going on with the city. I make notes, and I try to bring before the board the questions that I've been posed by the city, by the citizens of our city. I'm going to ask this question, just because I've been asked it 100 times, and I'd just like an answer. City Manager, Mr. Collins, do you or any of your family know anyone or are related to anyone with TNT, the TNT organization, or anyone selling fireworks for TNT?
Mayor, are you kidding me with these...are we really going to interrogate the city manager right now?
I'm just asking a question that I've been asked to ask.
Mr. Potter?
I can answer that. My answer is I'm not going to answer it.
Okay.
Do you have a question for me, Mayor?
Is this kind of questioning proper at a BOC?
Mayor, I would request that it continue.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Okay. So am I understanding that the TNT tents did not have to have a temporary structure permit?
I don't know if you're understanding that or not. What I suggested to you was that there's been no request by whoever installed that tent for the tent inspection, which we would normally do when they make the request.
Okay. So there's no repercussions that they put up a tent and did not ask for a permit?
I don't believe so. It's just an inspection. It's a free, no-cost inspection that our planning department does. I'm not aware that there's been a request made.
So anyone in the City of Fairview can erect any temporary structure without asking for a permit, though?
I don't know that I can answer that question. There are specifics I would attempt to, and I don't have the code in front of me. I can just simply tell you that the agency or whoever installed that tent has not reached out to the city and requested an inspection.
So what happens if a storm comes, and that tent blows over and injures someone, and they want to sue? Is that just...they're going to sue just Walmart, or would we be liable as well as the city for not giving them a temporary structure permit?
I don't know who they would sue. I can't imagine that the city would be liable, because the city's not taken any action or been requested to approve the tent.
So were the veterans required to have a temporary structure permit?
I believe they requested from the planning department to have their tent inspected, and I believe the planning department did, in fact, complete the inspection.
So why would they do that if that's not required?
I didn't state it wasn't required. I said that no one had requested the inspection. When we're requested, we'll go out there and do the inspection on the tent. I don't know any other way to answer the question. I'm sorry.
I spoke with Walmart myself. They said it was TNT, and that they were going to Let me make sure I have all my questions answered.
Let me make sure I have all my questions answered. Okay, fireworks are able to start being sold on Sunday. Staff is not here on Sunday. So if fireworks are, if they start selling fireworks at both these tents on Sunday, then what you're saying is that we need to have a police officer go to the tents and cite them for selling without a permit? I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Potter, we can't hear you.
Whoever the codes enforcement officer is, I don't know who's, I don't know who issues those citations.
What we would do in that instance would be to have a police officer go out, observe the sale. Once we observe the sale and there's a violation, then the city would gather whatever representative information there is for that tent activity, whatever the issue is, and after that, we would issue them a citation or summons.
Well, the ordinance says store other, it doesn't have to be a sale. If those fireworks are in those tents, then they're violating our ordinance.
I believe the question was if they're selling.
Okay, I'll restate my question. If those fireworks are present where we can see them, starting on Sunday, then a police officer can go out there and cite them for it?
If we observe a violation, we'll gather that information and summons whatever responsible party there is.
So who needs to, can anyone ask the police to go out there and cite them?
Commissioner Anderson, I believe the police department is capable, without request from others, to visit the sites and see whether or not they're functioning as they should or functioning at all.
Okay, so they're just, they just have been told to kind of monitor the situation?
They haven't been told to monitor the situation at all. There's no situation to monitor at this point.
I find it hard to believe that there are two TNT tents set up, and we're just assuming that they're not going to sell fireworks. So fireworks start selling on Sunday, the fireworks can start being sold on Sunday, and I think that we should have an officer go check both tents on Sunday to see if the fireworks are there so that they can be cited immediately. The other, the other thing is, is, you know, our veterans, we constructed this ordinance so that the sale of fireworks could be done by nonprofit so that, you know, there's money that could come into our community or stay in our community and not leave our community. And why it took three weeks for them to get a permit when normally it's 24 hours, I'm confused about that.
I'd be glad to answer that question for you. When we got the information, the entire fireworks ordinance was under discussion, and to be quite honest with you, no one knew what the final fireworks ordinance was going to look like. They also can't start selling fireworks until June 20. So knowing that there's an ordinance that's underway, knowing that they can't sell until the 20th, and knowing it's the city staff's responsibility to make sure that these ordinance are carried through, the staff made the responsibility to make sure we did not delay their opportunity to sell fireworks, but we didn't preemptively issue a permit in accordance with a ordinance that may or may not be valid at that time.
So basically, if the veterans want to sell fireworks, they should just go ahead and get their tent and everything set up like TNT did and not worry about getting any type of, you know, the city having a problem with it because, you know, that's, that's the way, you know, it's going to be done now, right?
Is that a question or a comment?
Well, right? Question mark?
Okay, right, no. There's an application, there's an application process to go through, and everyone has to be given the opportunity to go through the application process. I don't understand what's being missed. They're welcome to, we've submitted the information to what we believe to be a representative from TNT. Here's the ordinance. They can make the, they can make the effort to comply with the ordinance, or they'll be in violation of the ordinance. We've simply done our part to provide to them a copy of the ordinance that they must comply with.
I just don't see a deterrent of $50 a day when a tent is making $100,000 sale as a deterrent.
And I believe that will be a conversation for your state representative and not your city manager.
That's state law. Cities can't find people more than $50 a day for an ordinance violation.
When other ordinance, other ordinances in our city are violated, then a $50 fine is all that can happen?
Exactly.
Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So when we set up this food truck ordinance or whatever we're going to do, and someone sets up food trucks all along the highway, they're just going to get a $50 fine and continue to sell food?
That's accurate unless you do, unless you go to chance record and try to shut them down and get an injunction. That, you can't charge, cities can't charge someone more than $50 or fine somebody more than $50 for an ordinance violation of any type.
Then what are our ordinance in laws for if we, if we can?
They need to be updated. It's been that way for, I don't know, many, many, many decades.
Well, dang, I'm going to set up fireworks tent next year.
Vice Mayor, is that all?
That's all.
Mayor, are there any other questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
12 communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Nothing, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. And I'll use the correct terminology, the police department, Chief Humphries. You know, about this, about this work that we're going to be doing, hopefully with the reserve and so forth, you know, this is amazing that we're going to be able to save more money. You know, with the LISO project where they bring used military equipment and then are able to sell that, we have purchased a number of police cars, and we have saved taxpayers' money. The police department has been extremely creative with a very tight budget. So I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate them looking and working outside of the box to save the citizens of Fairview money and provide new equipment, latest and greatest for their police officers and training as well. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
I've just heard all the exciting news about the donations we've gotten this week for the playground. On a daily basis, the kids come into the shop. They're so excited that we're right around the corner from building. I just want to say thank you so much to the Friends of Bowie Park and the Playground Committee for all the effort that they have put for to continue to raise funds. I know that we have a big chunk that's coming from our citizens through property tax dollars, which will cover most of it. But, you know, to continue so that we have the money for maintenance and, you know, like I said, I think this pavilion would be great with the picnic tables is just really exciting. And thank you to all the people who've made the donations. I want to personally thank the veterans for all the money you raise and the efforts you go to to make sure that our community, the Shop for a Cop, the, you know, the different organizations that you donate money to, the playground, veterans that, you know, need help, families that need help. I know how hard you work, and I've talked to a lot of you on a personal level, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So what I would like to say, knowing that we're televised, is that I hope that our community will go to the Lions Club parking area beside the ball field, beside the baseball field on Highway 96 and purchase all of their fireworks. Because that right there is going to, you know, take care of this whole situation. If we sell you out and we purchase from you. So that's what I would like to see happen. We need to keep Fairview beautiful. Please pick up your trash and don't throw it out. And just, you know, I hope everybody has a really great week. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner... Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's one thing for us to disagree as board members. It is a totally different thing for us to attack members of the city and their family. I think it's disgraceful. And I'm going to leave that at that because I'm vibrating over here, I'm so livid. We literally have spent over hours, hours, even an hour tonight, on a fireworks ordinance, yet we passed a multimillion dollar budget with little to no discussion. Unbelievable to me. Absolutely unbelievable to me. And if I'm just being real honest, I've probably never been more disappointed in this board than I am tonight. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I have nothing, so I will entertain a motion for us to adjourn.
Mayor, I just want to say this for the record. The Tennessee Supreme Court, in interpreting Article 6, Section 14 of the Tennessee Constitution, says that punitive municipal fines are limited to $50, so we would require an amendment to the Tennessee Constitution.
And let that be noted, that the city attorney has told us once again that the Constitution of Tennessee does not allow us to charge any more than $50. The city manager does not control that. The police do not control that. Fairview Codes does not control that. The state of Tennessee controls that. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Or we'll sit here all night. And we're adjourned.